To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as I ask for a moment of silence for past volunteer firefighter, Sean Cunningham. May he rest in peace.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ray. Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
For his brother.
Pro rule minutes?
February 21st and March 7th.
Motion by Alderman Massey for both minutes, second by Alderman Witt. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, for the good of the city, we have an audit report presentation.
Hi, I'm Donna Crowley with RBT. So I'm here to present your December 31st, 2021 audited financial statements. I'm going to just refer to at first the auditor's report, which gives a clean opinion, and that is what you want. So all is good. I'm going to just do a few comparisons from prior year. Your net position has increased by about $10 million, which is a good thing. That is due to your increase in revenue and decrease in expenses. So, perfect. On the fund level, oh, actually, no, that's fine. On the fund level, your total fund balances in the funds, which is how you're used to seeing things, is about $17 million. You had either slight decreases or increases in most of the funds, except where they're in sewer, they had some bigger decreases. And just really one last thing, I'm going to skip all the way to the back of the report, to the single audit. We just had a couple of findings, and we had tested the ARPA money, so there was just a couple small findings in which the city has already provided a corrective action plan for. And that is it, unless there's any questions.
Quick question. Just 2021, why so late?
Well, you had a few turnovers in management, which definitely prolonged things. The first one, those people had done most of the work, and so the second set of people who came in really had to go through the 21st year reporting and provide everything for us. And they had to, you know, see what their, figure out things for themselves to provide us the information. And then during the audit, the second set of management came on, so you had another turnover. So again, that takes time.
Okay. Did you get all the information you need?
Oh, yes. That's why we're final. And we're right on for, it hasn't delayed, 22. We're on to start in about a month.
And when will we get that audit report?
We're hoping since now we have the same people go in here, it should probably in the summer is usually the usual timeframe.
Does any member have any questions? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. Okay. Remarks at the mayor?
I don't have much to report tonight, except for be available for questions, but also to advise you, April 4th will be the state of the city as required under the charter. It's a little bit late, but I guess we're all late this year.
2021 late.
So we start the meeting earlier then, than the 7:30? I think that will be up to the council president, not the first word Alderman.
It's up to the mayor if you want. We can start at 7:00. If Mr. Johnson can get here at 7:00.
I'm staying out of it.
Whatever the council president decides, I'll probably be speaking for close to an hour. So. You gonna say anything? I'm gonna say that Joseph G. Massey is a good man. Then I'll be here. Any questions?
I'll do my best. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, I wish, I wanted to ask if you could give us an update, number one, on the ONW, because we had someone ask about that at the constituents meeting. And then also, I'm curious, on the Psych Center, does the transfer of the property from the state?
First, ONW. ONW, we just received extensions on the original bids for the shoring and the abatement. The reason for the, for the extensions is we don't have all the money lined up yet. The projections were, are complying with all of the SHIPA requirements, which are part of the acceptance of the grants, the numerous grants that we're receiving, along with other factors have driven up the cost. You know, the post-COVID costs are significantly higher than pre-COVID. So we're looking at other ways to raise funds. We form, are in the process of forming a local development corporation that would make the ONW project eligible for state and federal historic tax credits, which will potentially inject another $6 to $7 million of cash into the project. And we're also, Maria's office examining with Caitlin McNamara, the new market tax credits. So we're looking to put together as much cash as we can going into the project. And I know Head Start is going to be relocating this year, just on a temporary basis. So we all want to get in there, but we don't want to start the project and not have enough cash to finish the project. So that's why the purpose of forming the LDC and looking at other sources of funds. We also have another request in for Restore New York, that was, which is a historic grant restoration program through New York State. And I'm not sure when we'll be hearing one way or the other on that. So that's the status of ONW. The Psych Center is in its, probably its 15th role with, with New York State telling us it's only 60 days away. We have once again forwarded all the information for probably the 10th time to them, and it just gets bounced around. My understanding is after Alex Smith, our corporation counsel, finally became a nudge, as he uses the term, that appears that they do have the information that's necessary to identify or to forward to each of the agencies that are required to sign off on the transfer. And then we are developing our plan for what properties we're going to renovate for fire police, what properties are going to go to the college, the big ones being Kleiner and Tuckerman, which properties we're going to look to develop through maybe a local development corporation or through the private sector, and we're developing that plan. Keep a note on the old nurses quarters, I think it was the nurses quarters, the Tudor building that had the fire in the back?
Yeah.
FATN did receive a $1.2 million state grant to renovate that as dormitories for the college. The college is projecting 2,000 students within the next five years. And that was a positive move, because it's the first injection of state funds into, into this project up there. So we know what's going to happen, we're just not sure when it's going to happen. But we've been very forceful with them of late because of the constant break-ins into the vacant buildings. And we're concerned about having another major disaster up there. So that's where we're at with both projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had one other question regarding that. Is it, are you aware that they're using one of those buildings to house some of the Northern Academy students as like a dorm?
Am I aware that they're doing it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they had a planning board approval for dormitory, and I think it was in some of the housing, though, the houses towards the Monhegan Avenue side. They're allowed under the zoning code for student and staff related to the college. And I think one or two of the houses do have student dorms. But the Tudor building in the back, Tudor brick building, whatever it's called, will be housing a lot more than that. I believe they told us probably approaching 200 students.
College or Northern Academy?
College.
College.
And they are ready to move now, but they have to wait until they get that state grant number before they can start the work.
Understood. Thank you.
So that will be happening this, this summer. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
What time are we starting on April 4th, so I know?
7 o'clock.
7 o'clock. Thank you.
We're gonna start early? Economic Development?
Good evening, everyone. Today, we had our IDA meeting, and we also had the audit presentation. The IDA came out with a clean audit, and so we're moving forward to send the audit and the Paris report, just similar to what we do for the CDA, because it's a public authorities, to the New York State. So that occurred today. We had a great concert at the Paramount this past weekend, Herman's Hermits with Peter Noon, approached close to 700 folks at the Paramount. It was an awesome show. So we have a new show announcement. Asia is coming to the Paramount in August, and that's going to be part of the rock roll and run with the Run for Downtown Weekend. So we're partnering up with them for promotions and, and stuff like that. So coming up, we have the orchestra featuring former members of ELO. We have a Steely Dan tribute group coming. We have Debbie Gibson. We have Asia. And then we have, in the fall, some oldie shows, Shadows of the Sixties, Motown, and then we're booking some more right now. And don't forget, we have movies as well, MiddletownParamount.com. Also, another ribbon cutting this week at 100 North Street, this Friday, 3:30, MCM Beauty Supplies. So join us on Friday, 3:30 at 100 North Street. That's all I have for this evening.
Any question, Maria? Thank you, Maria. DPW Commissioner? I saw some hot asshole out there.
What is that?
You care to share the humor? Where should I look?
Good afternoon. Good evening, rather. So to start off, Alderman Massey, the reservoirs are at 96% full. And we have plenty of water, and obviously, we're going to start lowering the water level a little bit at the Shuanggang Reservoir for the work to take place. The contractor, Acer Verdon, is doing a great job, very professional, and they're working with our guys. We help them with our equipment so that minimize any change orders in the future, including we use our vac truck as an example to clean the gatehouse and so on. And they got divers. They're, they're really top-notch so far contractors. We're very happy with their performance, and the project is moving along. We had a pre-construction meeting for the Kench Reservoir with the other contractor, and hopefully, things will move along well with the other contractor at Kench. He's mobilizing to start on April 14th. Plumbing, everybody complains about, there's minimal number of plumbers in here, as the mayor knows. We have a test coming in April 14th. The deadline to register for this test is March 31st. We already, I believe, we have six candidates that have been reviewed, their credentials reviewed and accepted to sit for the test. So anybody else who's interested, you know, here we are. So we're not trying to keep the number of plumbers to minimum. We're opening it up to qualified plumbers. So hopefully, they will pass the test and we'll have more licensed plumbers. Yard waste, it's going to start April 3rd. So you can't deposit the leaves in the street, please. Everything has to be in a container. If you have branches in there, they'll have to be wrapped with the string so we can pick them up. And it's all in our code, and it's going to be advertised on our website, and we'll send an Excel as well with the link to that handout to tell you the specific, remind people of the specifics, how the yard waste should be deposited for DPW to come and pick it up. So that will be Monday, April 3rd, we'll start. We're flushing, we started flushing the water distribution system. We're doing the second and third ward. So again, expect low pressure or sometimes no water while we are doing the flushing in the immediate vicinity of your property. And be on the lookout for discolored water for 48 hours after, after we finish flushing in your neighborhood. If you're working, you come home, you see by the fire hydrant, water has been all over the street. It means we've done that area. So just be on the lookout so that the laundry will not be discolored when you do it.
Yeah, washing clothes.
Right. Yeah, be on the lookout for discolored water, please, when you do the laundry. Allow 48 hours before, before, before you use the water for laundry. Recycling, again, I don't want to just keep repeating it. I want to start the recycling by thanking Alderman Green, because he was able to translate our handout that we use from the county to Spanish. And he's going to try to do it in Chinese as well. So that will be, that's going to be immediately be mailed out with all our literature, whether it is in the water bill, whether it is, it's going to be on our website, it's going to be going in every rental permit that we send out, and on the website, and so on. All our social media is going to be on Channel 20. So we'll publicize that as much as possible. And we continue, a lot of people are very upset, they call us, they're very upset about the letter they received, that their recycling is not picked up, and this is your final warning. So we explain to them, all it takes, just a couple of cans from people who are not complying with the recycling ordinance, and then the whole truck will be rejected. So everybody in their, that whole neighborhood, in their more than neighborhood, most of the world that has been recycling and been very careful about what to recycle, their entire effort will be wasted because a couple of garbage bags that were found in a big yard, in a big, I'm sorry, in a big truck, which is a compactor. So, you know, it's not only reflecting on you, it's reflecting on everybody who's trying to recycle and do the right thing. And I know everybody's trying to do the right thing, you just, you have to be extra careful about what to put in your recycling can and what not to put in there. So we go pick it up again, you know, we take pictures, we document everything. And we go the following week, we pick it up as garbage, recyclables that were rejected on Sunday. But very soon, we got code enforcement is going to start going, and they're going to be issuing a violation, notice of violation, and courts and all that stuff. We don't want to do that. We don't want to do that, but, you know, that's, we're trying our best to send the message out. And so far, no violations were sent out, just letters of warning. So please work with us. We appreciate that very much. The Water Department, they continue while they're flushing and doing everything else and helping with the dam project. They're really doing a very impressive job. On, on March 29th, we, they were working like almost 24 hours to replace major high-pressure 20-inch old valve. That was done, we wanted to, why is it 24 hours? Because they had to prepare the ditch and prepare, find out everything that we need to do, and then cut the water off so that our residents will be at least amount, at least convenient by our replacement of this 20-inch valve. And I want to thank Council President Rodriguez, because he stopped there at night while we're working. And the men appreciate him being there and, you know, just, you know, keep the spirit up in there after working 24 hours. After that, they went to sleep Friday morning, because the water pressure was restored, 7:30 in the morning. They cleaned up, they went to sleep a couple of hours. Some of them came back to plow, or they're ready to come back to plow to help the street department in their plowing operation, because the street department by itself cannot do the plowing of the entire city when we have a good-sized storm. So we appreciate the council president again coming out and being with us for a little bit. And I want to, I want to mention, you know, Brian Smith, his deputy commissioner, Scott Mills, he's the foreman, Bob, Ed, and Taylor, they really have done magnificent job, I mean, jumping and getting the job done. It's very difficult work. And as the council president saw, the 20-inch pipe, every time we open up, because it's very old infrastructure, it goes back to the early 1900, every time we open up the ground, we find something new. The actual 20-inch water main, as the council president saw in his own eyes, was curved. I've never seen anything like this in my life. So the guys, they had to be very careful how to cut the pipe, how to cut the old valve out, very close to the valve, remove it, so we can put the dresser coupling in there. So, you know, it was quite an involved operation, just because of what we found in the field. The actual pipe is curved. Never seen anything like this. But that's, so I'm very, very, very happy with the guys and their performance, and they're not complaining, and they just keep going. We appreciate that very much of them. Before you tonight, there is a request to award the contract for, for repainting and upgrading the Highland Avenue water storage tank to comply with the current requirements and also repainting it. Some people, you know, if you want to take a drive over Highland Avenue, just outside the city, Highland Avenue extension, you will see how poor the condition of the tank is. So it's really time for it, and we appreciate your support for, for approving this project. And we have about a $3 million grant, under, just under $3 million grant from EFC for this project. Any questions for me?
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
City Treasurer?
Good evening, everyone. I have a resolution before you in regards to transferring our year-end overdrafts. I just wanted to address it briefly. It is part of closing out the 2022 year. We have to, based on our way of accounting for expenses and revenue, do what's called modified accrual accounting, placing the expenses in the right year, the revenue in the right year. And then, as part of our process, we have to balance out the budget according to its expenses. So I just wanted to clarify that. You have any questions?
Any question? Alderman Massey?
I don't have a question, but I want to congratulate you on the auditor's report. Thank you for the good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else? The 2021. Just saying.
Huh? You guys want to address the council?
We thought this was about the parking issues. I guess we are a little confused.
Yes, later.
Yes, later. Public hearing.
Back me again later.
You have a public hearing? Yeah, we have a public hearing. Next. Thanks, Mayor, for Police Chief.
Good evening. A few items for you this evening. As I emailed the council today, we did have a shooting, or shots fired last night that we're investigating on Prospect Avenue. There's not much more than I put out in the press release today. There's not really too much I can give you. As of right now, we do not have a victim that's coming forward, very similar to our previous events. So it makes it that much more difficult, just as we've been experiencing in the past. Overnight parking, it ended on March 15th. However, if we do have winter precipitation, the law is still that the cars have to be off the road for the night for DPW, or anytime for DPW. Lieutenant Sam Khalil retired from the department on March 17th, after serving just about 24 years of service. So I just want to recognize him. We did a walkout celebration for him this past Friday, and, you know, he's one of the people that will probably go down in the history of the Middletown Police Department, being extremely well-known throughout the community. So I thank him for his service, and I wish him the best. Lieutenant Eric Hargett just graduated on March 16th from the 285th FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. He spent the last 10 weeks in Quantico doing his studies. It's an amazing program. It's an honor to go to this program. He has joined the ranks of 1% of law enforcement worldwide to have this opportunity. So he's, he'll be back in the office tomorrow. We look forward to having him back with his newfound knowledge, and I look forward to the many years that he'll serve with that experience. Other than that, I have nothing in the seat of questions for me.
Any question for the Police Chief? Thank you, Chief. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening. I have nothing to report. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you. City Clerk?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to remind the community and the council that tomorrow, the mayor's youth council will be hosting a blood drive at Mulberry House, beginning at 2 o'clock, going until 6:30. We'll be taking walk-ins. If you are so inclined, please stop by. The blood banks are low this time of year. We could certainly use your help. Spring cleanup, the annual citywide cleanup day is on April 22nd. Due to the overwhelming response last year, we are moving the event starting point from Degnan Square down to the Erie Way Park. That's at 1-31 Union Street here in Middletown. You can sign up through our website on Sign Up Genius. You could pick a location in the city that is near and dear to you, or you can come out that morning, and we'll assign you a spot. Gloves and equipment will be provided by the city. We thank the Department of Public Works for their support. And as part of my city clerk's efforts to go paperless, we have launched our online FOIL portal. FOIL requests now are all digitized. You can request your information digitally, receive response digitally through email. No more need to come into the office and drop off paper or get paper handed to you. It's going to increase a lot of our transparency, and it'll save folks in the community some money, because state law requires us to provide documents electronically at no charge to our citizens. So check it out. It's on our website, Middletown-ny.com, on the right-hand side, FOIL requests. That's it.
Any question for the City Clerk? All right. Public hearings, grievances?
Good evening. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, on or as near to 7:30 PM as possible, in the common council chambers, second floor, at 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on proposed changes to the city's parking regulations. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will give, will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed changes to the parking regulations. The proposed parking regulations are available in the office of the common council clerk, City Hall at 16 James Street, and on our website. Any person unable to participate at the time of the public hearing can email comments submitted in advance to rmcormick@middletown-ny.com by order of the common council.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is now open. Come on.
Good evening. I'm William Gonzalez from Olivas de Panadas. I actually was invited up here by numerous people. I'm surprised they're not here, so I guess I'm...
They set you up.
Yeah, yeah, they set me up. But we, with these parking rules, it has impeded our business. A lot of my customers are refusing even to get into the restaurant. We're having to bring out the food, because they get nervous with this guy giving out tickets. My staff, right, is having to go out every two or three hours, check on their cars, and finding tickets on their cars. One of the main guys across the street, the pizza shop, they're delivery guys. They, they're getting tickets left and right. Now, we tried talking to the parking guy. He gives us information, and then turns around, it turns out to be false information. We, in and out, I got a little small restaurant. I got no storage. We either go into Sam's Club, Restaurant Depot, we come back, we do our thing, right? He sees us getting in our car, leaving, and he tells me, you could come back to the parking lot, just try not to park in the same spot. I come back and find other spaces, right? He still writes me a ticket. And it's been three tickets in a row. And he knows who I am. I mean, we in and out all day long, and he's still writing tickets. Thankfully, that we are able to fight a few of them, but this takes time from us. It's time-consuming, it's costing my business. My tenant upstairs, I had a nurse that used to start, worked, used to get home at 4:00 in the morning, right? They asked her to park at the 72-hour parking lot. This is a 23, 24-year-old young girl, walking from that parking lot at 4:00 in the morning, have to get up at 7:00 in the morning again to go move her car. I offered to pay for her parking permit, so I will not lose her. Right in the process, she got angry, for lack of a better word, and she moved. She moved, she just left. Most, this, this new rules are benefiting outsiders. She moved, she just left. Most, this, this new rules are benefiting outsiders, but the people that live in the town, the people that pay taxes in the town, are frustrated, and, and I'm really surprised that they're not here right now, because it's way too much for us. I don't live in the city, but I'm spending more time in parking than anything else. If there's anything else, like, maybe issuing business owners one ticket or one permit, just one single permit. My, my wife, the cook, my business depends on her, and by 9 o'clock in the morning, she starts sweating, not because it's hot in that kitchen, because she knows she has to go move that car. She has to go move that car. And then, when she moves it, three hours later, she has, she starts sweating again, because she knows she has to move that car. Now, walking three blocks at 9, 10 o'clock at night, today we closed the restaurant so we could be here, but we should usually get out 9, 10 o'clock at nighttime. Walking to that 72-hour parking, the light is not that great. It's scary. Being a business owner, people might think that I'm, you know, I have money in my pocket. All I got is holes in my pocket. So, imagine me walking at 9 o'clock at night, people thinking, "I'm scared." So, imagine sending my daughter here, but she stays with us. At the same time, 9 o'clock at nighttime, we have to walk all the way to that parking lot, because we can't park, and then you, if you go out there right now, that parking lot is empty. It's completely empty. You look at your streets, they're completely empty. On Thursdays, Fridays, you get a little bit of a crowd, the outsiders. By the town people, they come in, they rush in, they want to take their order, and rush right back out, because they want to avoid that ticket. I have no more comments, and thank you for listening.
The 72-hour lot you're talking about is the Paramount lot?
Yeah, well, further down.
Further down?
Further down.
Not the Paramount, not in front of Paramount?
Not in front, usually in front of the Paramount is when the Paramount is open, and we, I think it's four hours also. 72 hours is further down the street. I think that South Street, straight down.
Right.
Or go all the way close to, the other 72 hours is...
Canal Street.
Yeah, by the bus station, close to the bus station.
Right behind City Hall. I like to respond to them, because I don't know what you're, the people who oppose the parking regulations really are thinking. The parking regulations are there for your customers, not for your employees, and not for the, not for the business owners to park in front of their own business. Otherwise, you won't have any business. And your, if customers are afraid, they're not in your restaurant for more than three hours, three and a half, four hours. So, why would your customers be afraid to park legally to go into your restaurant? Unless, I'll ask you. So, if they're parking illegally, then, in front of a fire hydrant or in a loading zone, then that'll make a difference. But you've got to understand, if we gave permits out to every apartment and to every business owner, you have no customers. Every restaurant, every business here has no customers. So, there has to be a parking management plan. What we've recommended to people, I'm sure there's more than one person working at night with you, when you close at 9 o'clock, is when you slow down, and we told this to one of the restaurant owners also, is let that person go to the, pick up the car, and then move it closer to the restaurant, because you're not going to be there till midnight. So, at 7, 7:30, move your car then. But the idea is not to continually move your car every three hours, because you're violating the, basically, they can still give you a ticket for that, especially if it's in the same lot. But we can't accommodate, based on the limited parking that we have, businesses, tenants, and customers. So, I don't see how a business survives. And I've been, my family's been down here in business for, since 1998, in downtown. And before that, we were in a neighborhood with very limited parking, and we didn't allow our customers, or, I mean, our employees, to park by our business, because that parking spot is taking up a customer's spot. So, it's, it's a matter of planning how you're parking. Right by, right by here, behind City Hall, it's 72-hour parking, not far from your restaurant. Right on Canal Street, it's long-term parking, and I understand having someone, a young, young person, or, or, I don't want to sound sexist, but a female walking later at night. It could be anywhere. Your, your parking could be a little concerning in any community. But, and that's why you, you have to plan it where you can then move your car when the parking becomes, becomes open, or a couple hours before you're ready to leave. But what, what do you think would happen to your business if there was no parking at all?
So, most of our customers are people that live in the area, people that walk to our business. I find that the most regulars I see are people that live right there, and that's where their concerns are. A, B, in addition to that, a lot of tickets are given, I feel like, before the three-hour mark, so I don't, I don't know what that's about. But also, I, myself will be moving to downtown Middletown, and safety is a big concern, like, yeah, customers, but if I'm not safe, like, I've personally been harassed on the street. I've been followed in downtown Middletown. So, if I'm parking very far from where my apartment is, that's like one of my concerns. And then, with like the overnight parking pass, it ends at 7:00 AM, which doesn't make sense to me, because...
Ends at 11:00 AM.
Okay, that was one of false information I was given, so that's fair to me. But I think I'm worried about safety, as well as I feel like it's maybe just not fair. I feel like maybe some of the closer lots to, and I don't have all the information, so I could be wrong about some of the lots, but there's some lots, I feel like, maybe provide overnight parking. And not the one by Paramount, but the one that's closer, I think it's behind, like, next to Equilibrium, because that's a little closer versus doing the one down there, where nobody lives down there. So, I feel like it's, why have that overnight parking, when you could have this parking, and just say, okay, maybe during the day, when there's business, you know, parking four hours here, but tenants can move their car to these closer parking lots overnight, so that there's not...
Am I not mistaken, but the lot next to them has overnight parking?
Yes.
Yeah. The lot right next to your restaurant has overnight parking. So, your tenant has to buy a $25 or $50 or whatever it is permit.
Anna, what's the price?
It's a, on, because I think on the website...
Or $10 a month, it might be.
Yeah.
What is it, $10 a month?
It's $120 a year, and it's pro-rated down.
But they don't have to buy it all year if they don't want to.
It's pro-rated down every month.
So, $10 a month, they can park overnight right next door to your restaurant. But they can't park at, before 7 o'clock. It has to be after 7 o'clock, and they have to move their car by 11 o'clock in the morning. So, they don't have to walk over, they don't, you know, the, this, so if, I'll give you an example. My wife's restaurant has 30 employees. If we gave out parking tick, our parking passes, well, you're going to say, only give one or two to each business. Why should your business only get one or two, when you have two employees or three employees, and the business across the street that has 30 employees only get one or two? You see, the arguments can be made in every case.
What I'm saying is that...
So, they can hear you too.
I, myself, or my wife, had, we in and out, all day long. We have a very small restaurant. We in and out, all day long.
You wouldn't get a ticket, then?
Right, no, we do.
But not for three-hour parking?
We do.
But unless you're parking for more than three hours, right, Chief?
Correct. One of the issues that we're having in that parking lot...
Chief, if you'd come up.
And I don't know, I'd have to, I'd actually have to see your tickets to see what you're getting summons for, and see where you're parking, because there is some confusion, especially in the backside, of what is a legal spot and what is not a legal spot. I've met with some other business owners. But one of the main issues we're dealing with right now in that parking lot, and link up the street a little bit, is our delivery drivers, our people that are coming and going, our DoorDash people, they're kind of coming in quick, there's not a parking spot, so they're stopping right in the middle of that parking lot, right in the entering point. They get out, they run to the restaurant, grab their stuff. By the time they get back, they have a summons. But that's not a legitimate parking spot.
Not yet.
So, again, without seeing your tickets, seeing where you're parking, I can't give you appropriate guidance.
See, my, my issue with my tickets is I go out to Sam's Club, come back, park somewhere else in the same lot, and I get a ticket. And they claim that I've been there over three hours. I even shown receipts that I was.
Well, that's, that's a police matter. That's not a policy matter. That's, it seems that someone...
But what I'm asking, what I'm saying is that me, as a business owner, I wouldn't want my business there, being, I feel like I'm being harassed by this, and it's only this one guy. It's only this one guy, and it's all the time, all the time. He sees us moving the car.
Well, that would be a separate issue than the parking, so, because if you're getting tickets before three hours, and you're, it's, it's not a parking policy issue, it's a parking enforcement issue, and that, the chief will have to address that. And you could speak with him, because we wouldn't want to talk about specific employees without having all the information. But I can assure you, I've been here when there was tumbleweed going down the street, and you had a lot of parking, and, but there was no customers. There was no businesses. Now, you have, Saturday night, you had 700 people at the Paramount Theater. You had every business downtown full with customers, and the reason is because those customers had a place to park. If all the tenants parked there and left their car there for days, what, what do you, where does, what does that do for you as a business person? Now, your daughter said that most of your customers walk there. So, that sort of defeats the argument that your customers are hurting your business. If it's, most of your customers are walking there, they're not getting tickets for walking there.
Well, because they live in the area, and their, their concern is, oh, where am I putting my car? Because they're getting tickets all the time. They're like, where am I going?
Well, so that's, they can buy it overnight. Like I said, your, your tenants can get, for $10 a month, can get a parking pass to park right next door to your building, from 7 o'clock at night to 11 o'clock in the morning.
So, that's the misconception, because we're being told from 7 o'clock at night to 7 o'clock in the morning.
No, no, it starts again at 7:00 in the morning. Four hours starts again at 7:00 in the morning. So, the, so you go to 11 o'clock in the morning.
Because on the website, because that's where I've been getting my information from, it's some of the information, so I was like, oh...
Well, it might be, we'll try to make it more, we'll try to correct it a little bit, so it'll be easier. I understand. But, but if I would, you know, you're, add $10 a month into your tenant's rent, and give them a parking pass. And that's probably cheaper than getting a ticket, right?
Well, I tried, it seemed like...
Yeah, but, but it's, you know, at all times, it's not going to be a spot there. But you're, now, on the positive side, we are looking at building a parking structure. It's going to be close to this area here, but still, it's going to require a block walking. But it's, it's going to alleviate some of the parking issues downtown. But, but I appreciate your feedback. But the, we did think this thing through from a building owner's perspective, a tenant's perspective, a business owner's perspective, and a customer's point of view. And without customers, there's no one paying the bills in downtown. And now, your restaurant might rely mostly on walk-in, but the other places, all, majority of them rely on people coming from outside, people coming from wherever, other neighborhoods in the city or outside the city. And if they can't park, they're going somewhere else. And that's not good for downtown. But we're going to continue to look at it, and we'll try to make it clear for the tenant parking, because that is a big concern. But on the employees, is what, what my wife recommends to them is that, soon as it starts to slow down, you, anyone wants to move their car, 8 o'clock, 8:30, two of them go out together. They go down to the lot by the Paramount, or they come back here where there's long-term parking, they move their cars, and then they're close by. Then, at the end of the night, when they all get off, maybe one of them rides another one to the car. But it's like in any urban setting, or even if you were in a mall, one of the, one of our waitresses works in, in a strip mall. They're not allowed to park in the front of the strip mall. They have to park in the back, and they have the same concerns about going out at night around the back of the strip mall, where there's no lighting and no, and no people. So, you know, but we'll continue to monitor it and look at it, and we appreciate you opening downtown, and we appreciate, we want to keep you. And, and you do good business, and you have good espanadas.
I would have brought some, bud.
Yeah, I don't need that.
I'll meet with you, if you don't mind, a Thursday or Friday, and I could go over with you and show you some of the opportunities.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any members from the council? Alderman Kleiner?
Yeah, I just, we're past the winter parking, what affects the parking lots, and even from the overnight parking. And I'm hoping that the signage is going to be clear, because when you read the different lots, and you can park Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and this part of the lot, and then Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and the other part of the lot, but you, but you can't park in the part where they need it clear for snow clearing. There's a lot of regulations, and there's a lot of different specifications on where you can and can't park, and what times you can. Even with an overnight parking permit, you have to be in the correct part of the lot, and that's going to depend on what day you're parking. So, I just want to make sure that our signage gets those messages out very clearly.
Anyone else? Now, you got a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Alderman Massey, second to by. Alderman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Okay, remarks of Alderman. Alderman Massey.
Two quick things. Maria, thank you very much for the show, although I understand someone else is taking credit for bringing Peter Noonan in. But it was a wonderful show. Everyone's talking about it, and thanks for the next setup that you have coming in. Then, something on a, not a pleasant topic. Chief, I want to thank you, your entire department. When you have to deal with, I don't know if anyone saw this, but I'll read just a little bit of it. This is what these guys and gals have to deal with on a daily basis, and it really comes down to bail reform. Something's got to be done. I'm hoping the governor or legislators do something with it. But just one little incident. Back on March 12th, the desk sergeant got a call. Officers responded to the scene where they found an Asian man on the sidewalk, bleeding profusely from significant facial injuries. The police knew right away who the person was. He was familiar to the police. He was arrested two days earlier in charge with the robbery. It was alleged that on March 7th, he threatened a store clerk at, at a store, I won't list the store, and stole $200. He was arraigned and mandatorily released on his own recognizance. That was two or three days before he does this awful beating on this person. And it's, it's, this is just one incident. And our guys and gals have to put up with this on a daily basis, unfortunately. And I think a lot of it comes down to the judge's hands are tied, and it goes up to bail reform. So, anyone knows anyone with any influence, hopefully they'll change it. And when they arrested this guy a week ahead of time, the police would not have had to deal with him. In another incident, and a poor gentleman got beat severely. Thank you.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you. Just one thing. I just wanted to congratulate Lieutenant Khalil on his retirement. He was very helpful to me in the beginning of my journey here, helping me serve our people. So, he was a good guy, well, he still is, and I wish him all the best. Thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. First off, happy, happy, happy spring to everyone. It was nice to pull in here tonight at, you know, little after 6:30, and it was sunny, and actually 60 degrees, according to my truck at least. So, it's nice to have that, the sun coming back around, a little warm weather. I did last week attend a school safety tour through the Middletown School District with several other emergency services and other local leaders. A, the schools are phenomenally safe. I think it's probably one of the safest places you could be. But we did get a chance to see all the wonderful programming that the Middletown Schools offer, and I'm not going to go into it in extensive ways. But, man, I graduated in 2007, and I want to go back now. And I think that that was pretty much the, the thought of everyone who took the tour, was that the programming now is just so phenomenal that we want to go back. Speaking of the schools, the Middletown Fire Department volunteers will be facing against the Twin Towers Middle School staff in a basketball game. This is to raise donations for the Midi Mall that they have at Twin Towers Middle School. That game will take place on the 30th of March. It's a Thursday night at 6:00 PM at Twin Towers Middle School. There is a sign up. I believe you can see it through Facebook, if you want to get some tickets in advance, just because there is a limit at the door to how many can attend. But we look forward to that. And I was generously asked to be a speaker last night at the Mayor's Youth Council. I just want to say it's a wonderful group of, of young people, and their administrative staff, and, you know, they're going to do great things. I hope that someday we'll see some of them on this council. I hope that someday we'll see some of them on this council. Um, but please, if you can donate blood, donate blood for their drive this Wednesday. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. Um, first, I want to thank, uh, my compatriot Alderman Green for translating the recycling, uh, circular that we're going to send out. And he did a Spanish translation of it, and I've already sent it to the county. They're happy to have it. So, uh, next, we need to have it translated into Chinese. We're going to be working on that. The incident that happened and the bail reform, there's a part of bail reform. I mean, bail is a system for getting out of jail. But they have certainly, the law had ended up tying the judge's hands where they absolutely need more discretion for violent crimes. But the other component to that incident was the mental health services and mobile mental health. And he was taken to garnet for mental health evaluation and, and released, and released, and released. We really don't have effective mental health services, so that, uh, thank you, Alderman Massey. But that also needs to be part of that equation. We did hold our delayed constituents meeting. We had canceled it because of the weather report. It was going to get the blizzard, and it was going to be at two o'clock, and at four o'clock, and six o'clock, and so it actually was sprinkling when we would have had a meeting. But we did, we did have it, um, yesterday. Uh, we said, it's been two months since we had one, so we wanted to have them. I want to thank everyone who turned out for that. Our next constituents meeting will be on April tenth. Uh, so we'll have time to try and get a speaker and see what we can do. Uh, announce that the next meeting. Um, the Pride, uh, well, the citywide cleanup, I just want to mention that it's, it's, uh, at Erie Way, and that is where the farmer's market is. That's where the pavilion is. So if people don't know where Union Street and Erie Way is, that's, that's where we're going to be leaving from this year. One other thing, the county is having a household hazardous waste drop-off day, and that's at the Orange County Transfer Station, number one. That's opposite Mid-Hudson Psych, uh, in New Hampton. And that's, um, that's April fifteenth. So that's for the household, there's, the day for businesses, April fourteenth, but for individuals and for household. And you can bring pharmaceuticals and drop them off there too. So, uh, that's something to be aware of. And, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Ray.
I'm not going to repeat everything Andrew had to say. I did also attend the facilities store at the schools. Absolutely outstanding, uh, as a mother of a child who's looking at colleges. She has to keep in mind that some of these colleges will be a step down in technology and stuff that they have available to them. It's unbelievable. So, um, I agree, absolutely fantastic, that secret gets out. Uh, good luck to the real estate market, it will be a bidding war. Um, I just have to agree with Alderman Massey this evening. Uh, my work is in doing police reporting, and bail reform is an absolute nightmare, um, in terms of things like domestic violence and things like that. And the recidivism, as soon as they're released, is, it's terrifying, and it's scary for the people who are at risk. So I agree, uh, change must be made. And that's really all I have tonight. Have a good night.
Alderman Johnson.
Bail reform, that could be quite a lengthy conversation. Bad idea, apparently from the start, but, um, congrats to the Paramount. It just gets better and better. Congrats to all, whoever's in charge or takes responsibility for it. Uh, Chief, send my congrats to Sam, and congratulations to your FBI graduate. It sounds like an exciting person to have in your staff to kind of give some thoughts on what he learned at the academy. I appreciate that. Um, in your possession, I've given you a piece of paper because I am positive none of you realized that it was International Day of Forests today. So before, before warned and reminded. Uh, this is a UN initiative, and I've given you a piece of paper. And if you visited the website, which I did, you would read a very small part that says, "Forests give us so much to our health. They purify the water, clean the air, capture carbon, defy climate change, provide food, life-saving medicines, and improve our well-being. Yet despite all these priceless ecological, economic, social, and health benefits, forests are endangered by fires, pests, droughts, and unprecedented deforestation. It's up to us to safeguard these precious natural resources." So my goal this evening is to get some applause, which I did, so that's good, to plant a seed, pun intended. I would really like to know what my fellow council persons or anybody who's hearing these words is thinking about trees. Um, thoughts to be continued. Thank you.
Alderman Jean-François.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Tobin.
I'd like to thank the city treasurer for the clean audit, though greatly appreciated. And I do agree with the mayor, Olivia's does have great empanadas.
Okay, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing amendment to the C and transportation contract.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, second to by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François accepting a seventy-five thousand dollars in grant awards for the Middletown Police Department from the Division of Criminal Justice Services.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, second to by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson accepting a free little library from the Menistink Valley Rotary Club.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, second to by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray awarding the water storage tank painting and rehabilitation at Highland Avenue bid to Nuko Painting Corporation.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, second by Alderman Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner adopting revised investment policy for the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, second by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green authorizing agreement with Loomis as the plan administrator for the city-sponsored health insurance plan.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, second by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
Kleiner.